Uh, I think it was Island Park, Idaho for a while, the Catalent, Fred's.
Where's that?
Yellowstone, we stayed in the park, um, the, um, Teton, Teton.
Oh, it's on the island.
Grand Charki, um, which is a place Dina speeded along as a kid.
Okay.
Um, it's in Wyoming, well, they call it Wydeho because it's right on the border, you know?
Where's that?
And then, uh, we went to Boise, we spent some time in Boise.
It's a cool town, just.
It is a cool town. That was ever, no, but Greenbelt is from the middle.
Oh, wait.
Um, and Sun Valley, but we ended in Arches.
Ah, there we are.
Oh, okay, so you did a.
So we did a whole, we finished.
Yeah, that was really, really fun.
Yes, high-tailed it back, we were in Arches on Sunday.
Okay.
Doctor today about three hours ago, so.
Cause when I have it here.
Your Arches is really, really beautiful.
Look down and it's faded off.
And we did, um, oh, God.
Did I not sign your story?
The moon scape area, um.
Oh, that's right.
It is up there.
Yeah, that's one of my favorites. I don't know if that's a national park or national monument.
It's a main national monument.
Yeah, I camped one time in there and like in the base of the city town, it was super cool.
And it's an, it's like a dark, it's a national dark area, we weren't there at night, but.
It's a bad, bad area, just fast, nervous area.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is today the fifteenth?
It is.
So we can replace these.
They took the fifty cents.
Dave, did you want to sign it?
We aren't, you know.
Can speak one more into the register?
So.
I gotcha.
One minute.
So has, has Jeff left London before?
Thank you for coming back.
Dubbo yet, are they up in route?
I do, I don't know whether it's this weekend.
So I talked to Marcus last week, he spent like eighty-one days in Dubbo.
Yeah, he went in and met with the mayor.
Yeah.
Sent me pictures.
Okay.
Trying to. One of us. Call the meeting to order and ask you to call the roll, please.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Pitherich?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snately?
Here.
All right, we will now do the pledge of allegiance, if you want to join us, you're welcome.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we'll move now to approval of the agenda, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any changes or additions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda's approved, we'll move to public comments. Public participation, anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda? This would be the time to do that, we will give you five minutes to talk to us. If you give me a second to get my little timer, cause I like to be accurate and usually I have my timer next to me and I don't have her today, so.
I won't be five minutes.
I know you probably won't, but even so, I like to be prepared. Just tell us your name and where you're from and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council and staff. Uh, my name is Susie Hummel, I live on Hickory Hill Drive. And I am the board president of TOPPS, the Food Pantry and Resource Center here in Oxford. Long before I became a board member, I guess there was talk about this one-stop shop that everybody wanted in the community and, uh, various reasons throughout the years, it, it, it kind of fell apart. But, um, I'm here to say that it's inspiring to see a long-awaited vision finally coming to life, one that will serve the Oxford community in such a meaningful way. Thanks to the generous, uh, support of the Butler County Commissioners and the City of Oxford through ARPA funds, TOPPS is thrilled to announce the groundbreaking of our new one-stop-shop facility. It's gonna be on Wednesday, July thirtieth at one o'clock at our facility out on College Corner Pike, five, four, four, five, College Corner Pike. Um, all are welcome to come and celebrate this with us. The new facility will significantly enhance how services are delivered and accessed, making it easier for individuals and families to get the support they need. Even more exciting, we're gonna be able to retain our, our current buildings, um, which will allow us to expand our capacity and offer even more resources to the community. This marks a strong commitment to long-term growth and meeting a wide range of needs and we can't wait to take this next step forward together. Thank you, thank you to the City of Oxford for their support.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address council at this time? All right, thank you very much. We'll move then to the consent agenda and I would ask council, if there is a motion.
We will to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, um, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, consent agenda's approved, we'll move to resolutions, she can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to reduce the fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the parking meter fees and street closures for the twenty-twenty-five Red Brick Reunion.
Is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening, council, um, I'm here this evening, um, and so is Ms. Daggy from Enjoy Oxford, asking for not a waiver of fees, but a reduction of fees in parking for their annual Red Brick Reunion. They are asking for a reduction of normally is twelve dollars a day, they're asking for a reduction to six dollars for the parking, um, to help their event continue this year. Ms. Daggy, did you wanna speak about your?
Hi, Kim.
Good evening, everyone, Kim Daggy, Enjoy Oxford. I'm asking for this this year, it's the eleventh year Red Brick Reunion is coming here to Oxford, Ohio. We already have registration underway, I gave Heather a heat map so you can see where attendees are coming from this year already, so way up from Fort Wayne, Cleveland, Columbus, down Kentucky, Louisville, Indy, those sorts of places, so it does draw people from all over the region. However, we have had some change in sponsorship and even though we've landed a brand-new main sponsor, it was someone stepping up, so it wasn't a complete recovery of sponsorship. Part of this is our sponsorship committee, we're the two founders of Red Brick Reunion, one has retired and one is, um, having some medical concerns slowing him down. So I think that's part of that. It is their role to recruit sponsorship for this event, we execute the logistics for our community and making the, the event run smoothly, so I was hoping to have some consideration and forgiveness of, or not forgiveness, excuse me, reduction in some of the fees for this year's and how it's going, so I can continue to run the event as it always has been run without any missed seams or noticeable changes in how well it's been executed, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it, Jessica? Okay, I just didn't know whether you had anything else.
I just didn't know if there was anyone from the public.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors, any comments or questions?
You know, I appreciate, uh, it's a nice compromise solution, paying the fees, I do, I've always wondered in the summertime, Mark, we don't have full occupancy up and so that's probably reflective of the kind of lost revenue, but I think seems like a nice middle ground, so happy to support this.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just renew my request that staff come up with some criteria that council can use. I appreciate that this is sponsored by Enjoy Oxford and so that, that helps me a little bit in coming to grips with this. Anyone else? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Resolution is adopted, thank you. All right, uh, next we'll move to ordinance's first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of four-point-nine acres from EVR Investments LLC for the Oxford Area Trails Multimodal Transportation Project Phase Five.
Okay, and have a report.
Good evening again. On May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, council did approve the settlement agreement with EVR Investments to purchase land for Phase Five of the Oxford Area Trail. This ordinance allows for the city to purchase this property at a price of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. This is for two parcels, one is for the multimodal path alignment and the second parcel is a two-point-three acre parcel along seventy-three that we have called the, the triangle. Together, that is four-point-nine acres and we would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I did forget part, we are, um, as part of the agreement with EVR Investments, we will be doing a new, like, it's a farm field now, and so they have requested a vegetative barrier be planted along the south side of the trail, um, to kind of block some of that view and, um, ability to kind of just walk into the farm field and to also post signs that now entering private property and we have agreed to that as well. Along the north side, we have received some questions from residents already and along the north side of the trail, there's an existing vegetative barrier there already. It is our intention to leave that barrier there and, um, remove as few trees or scrub as possible in order to install the trail.
Well, we have, um, signs on that side as well?
I do not believe we are intending to have private property signs on that side, but a resident would be welcome to put something at the end of their property if they felt the need to do so. It's a pretty thick scrub brush right there, um, right now.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Hello, Ann.
Ann Fuhr, um, we live on, I don't know if it's called a parcel or what the little blocks are, two-zero-nine-nine on, uh, the map on page, uh, seventy of the agenda packet. So our property is adjacent and, um, we've attended public, uh, discussions of the, uh, path, the trail in the past and, um, we understand, uh, the, um, need to, uh, come up with incentives to the owner to sell the property, um, to guarantee that there's a recognition of private property, um, uh, that, um, is not open to the, the public, um, as part of the trail. I'm glad, we're glad to see, uh, surveillance cameras, we had asked for those in the past and, uh, were denied. So, um, I, I see, we think that's a good addition, but we wanna make it clear, um, that it's important to identify, uh, private property on both sides, uh, of the trail and to have that, um, we understand that there will be, uh, natural vegetation on both sides. And, um, I think it is important to talk with property owners because, um, a number of months ago when this was discussed, um, a number of the families who live in Southern Knolls came in and talked about the importance of having this trail to connect the middle school, uh, with the high school for their, uh, teens, um, and we think it's wonderful. But, um, it's, um, i- important, um, throughout the trail and I'm, I'm interested in uh, what your experience has been with the, uh, phase four that's already along, uh, Brookville Road and adjacent to properties, um, there, um, because we, we think it's important to, um, identify private property, um, outside of the trail area, so I hope we, we can talk with, um, you further about, um, the specifics of development in the future, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address this one?
Okay.
Thank you very much, councilors, any comments or questions?
I just have a technical question, this is kind of looking ahead, we'll be the owner, but, um, I guess I was looking in the map and David Drive has a stub street there and we like to anticipate potential future connectivity should adjacent parcels, so if in the future there were to be a road connection needed there, we own that and so we preserve that easement and connection to the south, is that correct?
Yeah, we own the road.
We would, Mike, can you answer that question? That David Drive.
I mean, we're gonna own that parcel and.
Yeah, so we don't need an easement because we own it and so, okay.
And, uh, you know, I've talked to staff and, and to the mayor about maybe, uh, selling the triangle, but not any of this other portion where the stub is located.
Okay, I just want, I mean, I just, uh, I assume that to be the case, but just that we anticipate the potential future need for connectivity through there. I think this is great and, um, I'm glad we were able to come to a resolution on this. You know, I hope that we can have a conversation about the disposition of the two-point-three acres because I think there's a variety of things that one could do with it, um, selling it being one, but I can imagine other things that would be part and parcel with the trail experience, so I hope that we can, I think that's a council decision we'll wanna have at some point. So thank you for all involved in getting to this point, including the property owner.
Thank you, is there any other comments or questions?
I was just gonna say, you know, in reference to the, the property owners, we'll do the same fabulous job we've done all, all along, listening to you and, and putting up more vegetative barriers or what needs to happen to just to, to make sure that you feel secure with the trail right at the edge of your backyard, so I think it'll be great.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Okay, let's move to second readings.
An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oxford codified ordinances.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and staff report, Doug? Yeah, there's no changes here, once again, this is, uh, to, uh, update the city's traffic and general offenses code to comply with state law. And that's all I have. All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Awfully exciting. Okay. Uh, no one, uh, raising their hand, I will turn to councilors, do you have any questions or comments? All those, oh, we gotta do the roll call for that.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snately?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number two.
An ordinance accepting the planning commission recommendation to amend two-point-seven-one acres of the official zoning map at sixty-ninety-nine Fairfield Road for, from two-family residential district to multifamily residential district.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the appellant has requested to table this, if someone would like to do so, do you have any report, okay?
I have nothing more to add, I was just making sure you had that, thank you.
So if someone would like to make that motion.
I would move to table this ordinance.
Second, so we're gonna table both the zoning and the?
Yeah, we'll get to that when we get, but we're reading them, so they're on the, they're basically ready to go.
So yeah, that's a motion and I second it.
Okay, um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, it is tabled and we'll read number three.
An ordinance amending the, or accepting the planning commission recommendation to approve a preliminary and final plan development for senior housing at sixty-ninety-nine Fairfield Road.
Okay, and is there a motion to adopt this?
What, are we moving to table this one?
No, well, first you're gonna move and second.
Okay, okay, so move, I move approval.
Okay.
I second approval.
Second, now we would entertain a motion to table.
I would move, we table.
I would second that motion.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor of tabling indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. All right, it is tabled and we'll move to number four.
An ordinance accepting the planning commission recommendation to amend two-point-one acres of land of the official zoning map located at fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road from a single-family medium-density residential district to a single-family residential district.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Sam?
The only additional information I wanted to point out is that you may have seen the, uh, information session that's, uh, coming out for New Roots Oxford, the name of the developments, that that's what this rezoning request is associated with. Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you very much, councilors, any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snately?
Yes, ordinance is adopted and we'll move to number five.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-seven-eighty-three, supplemental budget ordinance number four, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, hi Heidi.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, I do not have any changes from the end, from the first room.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Councilors, any comments or questions? You're ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mayor Snately?
Yes, ordinance is adopted, we'll move to announcements and communications, Doug, welcome back. Thank you, I just have a few things I wanna share with you, first off, I just wanted to share with you this afternoon, uh, Jessica and I met with Terry and Scott Webb, uh, to discuss the two ordinances that were tabled and we had a good discussion on it, uh, and Terry brought up some, uh, things that we discussed as well and so I sent an email out to council, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but, uh, you know, at the last council meeting, uh, we had some comments that maybe we weren't gonna support these two ordinances since he had some, uh, rental permits that hadn't been completed and permit fees that hadn't been paid, so we discussed that as well. So, you know, uh, he also discussed, and I'm speaking for Terry, he can get up and speak for himself, but whether or not to table these and, and I suggested, please leave it tabled because we've sent out the, uh, the agenda for this evening and it was recommended that, uh, it'd be tabled based on Terry's original request, so that was good. And I also shared with Terry that, uh, you know, given this, uh, the rental permits that haven't been obtained and the inspections that haven't been done, we'll be filing complaints in, in, uh, in court, uh, and probably before the next council meeting, so we hope to get those issues resolved. And so I just wanted to share that with city council and I hope you had a chance to read the memo. Uh, you know, we had some information provided from, from, uh, Chris and Jordan regarding, uh, whether or not we should, uh, not vote for those two ordinances and we'd like to keep those two issues separate, the two issues being. We should treat everybody the same. Yeah, the two ordinances dealing with his, uh, project and, and the issue of, uh, unpaid permits and lack of inspection, so I just wanted to share that with council and the public as well. Also, I didn't get a chance to share this with you in an email, but I had a lot of emails to go through when I came back. One of them that I got, uh, Sunday night was from Judy Boyko, the county administrator, informing me that, uh, they, the county is gonna explore the idea of relocating Area-One Court from its current location, uh, and she states in her email to me that, of course, the geographical area of Area-One Court will not change, only consideration of where the court is housed. So, uh, she's going to be issuing an RFP, seeking proposals for leased space, uh, where they could house Area-One Court and of course, we have an agreement with the county, it's, uh, an old agreement, it was signed in nineteen-ninety-five and, uh, our, uh, lease is still at the same rate that we had in nineteen-ninety-five. So, uh, I shared with her that, you know, almost ten years ago, we went through an exercise of looking to, uh, establish possibly a municipal court or a mayor's court or something like that and we decided to, uh, as a result of this study that management partners completed for the city, we decided to keep the, uh, current situation as it is, status quo. And so I just wanted to share that with you, uh, I did call Judy to get a little bit more information and the impression I got was that it has nothing to do with the condition of the court. Uh, you know, it's, uh, pretty much the same, uh, space that they had in nineteen-ninety-five, uh, although we've put new carpeting in and done some other things. So it basically has to do with cutting some costs, uh, that they're looking at. So we'll see what the RFP, uh, comes up with, we may submit a proposal, uh, I'd like to look at the RFP first and, uh, but I just wanted to share that with you, you know, we'll be anxiously awaiting for the RFP to be issued. You know, we have in the CIP, uh, money budgeted to, uh, study this building because, you know, not only is Area-One Court located here, but we obviously meet for city council meetings, planning mission, meetings, planning commission meetings and BZA and so one of the things that we'd like to complete before the end of the year is a study to look at whether or not we need to, uh, modernize, upgrade this, uh, building, renovate it or, uh, you know, demolish it and do something else, so, uh, anyway, I wanted to share that with you, the email that I got from Judy Boyko from the county. And the last thing I wanted to share with you is to keep you up to date on our, uh, water softening project is that our consultants, Strand Associate, Associates did submit the response to the EPA letter that, uh, we received on, uh, June sixth, their twenty-page comment letter on our proposed plans. It was twenty pages long. Yeah, and, and they submitted a, uh, thirty-three-page response to their, to their, uh, request for information and so we're on track with the project, I doubt if we're gonna be able to let it at the end of July given that we're almost there now, uh, but hopefully, uh, we'll get their response, uh, soon and possibly, uh, let it in, in August, so I just wanted to share that with city council and just to remind everyone that, you know, our current water hardness is three-hundred-and-fifty milligrams per liter, which is very hard and that this is, of course, uh, measuring calcium carbonate in the water and we're gonna utilize membrane softening, uh, reverse osmosis to achieve a hardness of between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty milligrams per liter. So this new treatment process, when it's completed, will save customers the expense of buying and maintaining their own softening system, so that's all I have this evening, you're on, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Michael? JJ? Heidi? Okay. Sam? Jessica, welcome back to you too. How was Maine?
Lovely, thank you. Um, I just want to, um, extend our deep condolences to Glenn Sissoni's family, he was our AV operator here for, um, our public meetings for many years and, um, he passed away suddenly and he will be missed. And a special thank you to Jen Hale who stepped in to, um, help us out in a pinch, so I know she's upstairs, thank you Jen. And we will be creating a plan for how to address AV, um, coverage for our public meetings in the near future, so stay tuned. Um, and on, on a happier note, I do just want to congratulate John Buckholz for today being his fiftieth year employee by the City of Oxford and to our knowledge, the longest-serving employee, uh, in the City of Oxford, so JB, that's a long run and we love having you work with us, so thanks.
He's not here, but.
JB is the man. Okay, Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris, all right, Mike?
Uh, just wanna remind everybody about the OSH meeting on Monday, they moved dates, so that's five o'clock at the Presbyterian Seminary for, uh, Oxford Area Solutions for Housing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my only thing is I got to do a ride-along with Officer Hartwig this weekend, uh, it was Fourth of July weekend and it was not as eventful as it could have been, which like honestly, I am fine with. I am fine with. I didn't see anybody injured with fireworks, which was really my only goal for the night. But it was just outrageously educational. I learned so, so much, and had a whole different level of appreciation for the patience and the care that our officers showed the community. There was a lot of stuff that just makes you scratch your head, and you're like, why are people doing that? And that's not how they approach it. They're just like, well, this is what we're doing. Let's find out more about what's going on, and we will proceed accordingly. So I was really, really impressed with the team, the whole night shift. They were so great. They walked me around the whole station. I got a tour. Officer Hartwig showed me all the gear, what the car does, why they do what they do. It was the amount, the like info dump into my brain. I think I'm still sorting through things and really thinking about the perspective that they bring to their work, whether it's a domestic issue, a break-in related issue, or an issue with somebody who's unhoused and trying to get them help. Our officers really do it all. They wear a lot of hats, and it's a really hard job. So I'm just, yeah, ceaselessly impressed by our team. The call volume that they deal with is high, and I am looking forward to doing another ride-along kind of during the quote-unquote "big show" when the students are back. I imagine it will be a very different Friday night experience, and I'm looking forward to it.
It will.
Thanks. That's all I got.
Are you prepared to be up to the wee hours of the morning?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready to go.
All right. Great. Amber?
I just want to echo how sad it is to have lost Glenn. He was a very, very kind and gentle soul, would chat with you a little bit after working hard up in the AV room. And again, also condolences. Thank you, Jessica, for what you shared to him and his family. And also, I missed the last meeting. My husband and I went on a three-week, three-day road trip all the way out west. We saw Yellowstone and Arches and Moab, and stayed on a cattle ranch in Island Park, Idaho, and I drove a side-by-side, and it was a lot of fun. And it kind of broke me out of a bit of a rut, and it reminded me of how beautiful this country is, that it is worth keeping together, knitting together, working hard so that, you know, we can be there for each other, to support each other. There are so many beautiful things in this country, and I felt fortunate to have been able to explore some of them the way I did these last few weeks. But it's also good to be back here in Oxford.
Thank you.
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just wanted to express my condolences. Glenn was one of those people I, I really appreciate the way the city in its annual report featured staff members, because they're, you know, a city, we have infrastructure, but ultimately, it's people. And some of those people are front and center. We're up here with microphones, but other people are doing quiet work, and Glenn just kind of embodied that. He was, you know, if you haven't been up there, upstairs, there's an AV booth where they're recording and filming. And Glenn was here on Tuesday nights as late as he was here before we were and here after the meetings ended. And Glenn did that job really beautifully. I mean, it requires paying attention to the meeting and following. But he also was really kind and would always take the time. And I, and you could see that he, the care he put into and was really supportive. I mean, I think this is a wonderful job, being on council. But some days at the end of a meeting, you can be tired or whatever, and he was just very like, he had a nice, kind word to say right when you needed it. And so I really feel for him, because I know that he had recently lost his wife of 35 years, which was this sad and hard thing, but he was excited about the future. So when you learn that people die unexpectedly, it does cause you to reflect on how to be happy with the time that you do have. And I believe he lived his life, he was a golfer. So anyway, my condolences to all the people in Glenn's family. I think he survived by his mother and his sister and his brother, and also his friend Dawn Stoneboss, then her daughter. So my condolences, and thank you, Glenn, for all that you did for us.
Thank you very much. I wanted to also mention, but you did a really good job and a thorough job. But Glenn was such a special person. He just lit up a room by entering it. He's one of those people. And he was always cheerful. He was always positive, and he was always very competent. And he took care of us, and we just assumed he would always be here. And so it's a, it's a very sad day, and my condolences to his family. He will definitely be missed. On the other hand, I want to give my own congratulations to John Buckholz. I've known John, it seems like, for at least 50 years. I don't know. But he is, he is an awesome individual, as well as he was an awesome police officer, and he continues to work for the city and does a really good job. And everybody knows him, and everybody trusts him, and they count on him, and he does a fabulous job. So here's to John. Congratulations. It is, the 4th of July went by in between our two meetings, and I wanted to commend the Police Department and the Recreation Department. I thought you did a fabulous job all around. And the fireworks were great, the events preceding were handled very well, and getting out was smooth, and your officers did a great job, JJ. So congratulations to them. I really appreciate them. And finally, I want to remind people of Red Brick Friday coming up. So that is this Friday, the 18th of July. Please be there, have fun, engage with all of your fellow Oxfordians and those who will come into town to join us. And please, while you're here, check out our local businesses and make sure that you take a moment to go in some of those businesses, maybe have dinner uptown, and let's make it a good event for them as well. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.